Tom Star. Let's go. No, I'm just cutting this from my time now. All right, it's about that time. Uh, no, Ro-Roger, we have a few absences. Roger will not be here. Lynn will not be here. Wayne Rieschel will not be here either. He had an issue with his grandbaby and had to run up to Clinton. However, we have five of our six aldermen. Our mayor is here and our city attorney is not here either. I talked to him this afternoon. He indicated that he would be here, but he is not. At any rate, we'll get started. Uh, modifications to the agenda. I have a couple modifications I'd like to throw on there. We have an issue with the police car. Reeve Hartzell, will you give us a little bit of information on that?
Yes, uh, what happened? We've been having some small and long problems with car two, which is the old and pallets, the blue car, if you're not familiar with it. And took it down to get service because it was having some front end problems. And got an estimate on repairs on it. And it was, uh, it was two estimates, two separate things that need to be done. And it was a total of thirteen hundred twelve dollars and forty-one cents. And for that car, back in oh-nine, it, uh, we bought the car brand new in oh-two for nineteen thousand zero fifty-four dollars. And, uh, in, in two thousand nine, it was valued at eighty-one hundred sixty-six dollars. But it depreciates out at twenty-seven hundred twenty-two dollars a year. So this year, as of February this year, it's zero now for next month. And I don't know if it's, I hate to put thirteen hundred dollars in that car.
What's, what's all wrong with it?
It's the whole front end.
The whole front end?
And, uh, there's also oil leak. It's gotta have all the front end done. I've got a copy of the, the items here. Me not being a mechanic, it's gonna be hard for me to explain it to you, but I'll be glad to pass these around and let you look at them.
The cars were left. Pardon? That car's wore out.
Yeah, yeah, that's basically it. He said that it's just, uh, just wore out.
Look, Larry, I've got an idea. And keep in mind, most of my ideas stink. But my idea is, uh, we have a road department that is funded by our general revenue, more or less. And we also have a fund, a road fund, uh, our transportation fund, that is stereotypically only utilized for asphalt during the summer. My idea is we kick back some of the money allocated for the, uh, road department and fund the road department through the transportation fund. That will loosen up some funds and we can buy a new car or a good used car.
Can we do that, Wiggles?
Yeah, Travis is not here and I'm not a very good lawyer.
I have two good ideas, yeah.
That, that's my idea. And it would give us a little bit of wiggle room to take care of the, these, these problems when they do arise. All right. Any other input or other ideas?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. We have one more modification to the agenda. Our fire chief, uh, has a gentleman who has applied for a position with the fire department. You would like to address, uh, the board with that.
Yeah, I just got this air out. I had it in before. Um, I didn't know if you guys wanted to wait until next month. So I just went in and brought it up. It's, uh, Philip Heath Junior. He lives on Blaine Street, uh, eighteen, wants to join the fire department.
Has he passed all of his stuff?
Did that today.
In search and waiting for direction?
Yes, I did that. Well, we have, you gotta put him on before I can send him out.
Right. And you're recommending him?
Yep.
I had no problem.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we, what was his name?
It was, uh, Philip Kevin Heath.
Heath?
Heath, F-E-I-T-H.
Okay, that we go with the recommendation of the, uh, fire chief to have Kevin Heath be a new fire partner.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 My motion passes.
Thank you.
Mayor comments? You all are blessed tonight. I don't have too much to say. So without anything pressing on my mind, we'll move straight on to the citizen comments. Sir?
My name is Delmon, council. My name is Don Payton. Motion to adjourn from the seat of the Delmon. Mayor and I to ask you guys to please pass an ordinance to ban pit bulls from the city of Austin. I talked to the mayor today. He said that they could not do that. However, I want to bring up a few points. A few years back, they banned horses from the city. They banned chickens. They banned pigs. They banned rabbits, guys. It, there is no reason why pit bulls cannot be banned from the city. There have been six attacks from pit bulls this past year. My little dog was one of them. His head was completely ripped out of his collar on December thirtieth. And there is no sense in this, guys.
In a private yard.
He was in a private yard. He was chained. He was, he was completely in a private yard. There was no sense in this. The pit bull that did this attacked me two weeks earlier. When I chased him out of my yard, he went to Larry Hicks's yard and tried to attack Larry Hicks. These dogs are vicious, they're cruel, and they don't belong in the city of Austin.
Plus the old woman riding the bicycle that, that little woman attacked her.
I was gonna get to that. Second place, if my daughter would have been at home. She's real tiny, she's real petite. That dog would have killed her instead of my dog if she'd been out in that road that day. Like she usually is playing. She would have been dead, guys. Are we gonna sit back and let this happen until one of our children get hurt or one of the elderly? The same day this dog attacked one of our elderly or tried to. Luckily, we had two neighbors there. They got in front of him and chased him back to my dog. So he finished ripping him to pieces. But the lady rides her bike every day down our street. And he went after her. When the cops arrived, the same dog went after our police officer and the police officer put him down. But if he hadn't have been, had his gun out, ready for this, our police officer probably would have been dead. Are we ready for them kind of findings? Are we ready for, for these dogs to attack and kill another human being? Or are we gonna stand up and get them out of the city?
I think Springfield has the pit bull ordinance, doesn't it, Debbie?
Under their ordinance, the pit bulls are to be, they gotta be microchipped. They have to put up a bond in order to keep it. And they have to show that they are able to take care of this dog and keep it from harming somebody else.
I think that would work, don't you?
It would work if we can implement it. But I'd, I'd rather just have them out of the city. There's no reason for them to be there.
I wonder why Springfield just didn't do a complete ban? Anybody remember?
Um, they were gonna do a ban. Actually, they were gonna do a vote. I think they were done going to the vote of the people and council decided to try to ban first.
In, in my fears, there might be some constitutional limit, uh, limitations to outright banning the dogs. Uh, if, if it's something we can do that's within our constitutional rights as a city.
If that's the case, old Mr. Mayor, then it was above your constitutional rights to ban horses, to ban cows, to ban rabbits. You had no right to do that.
But...
Not sure. That's just a clear fact. There's no other way to look at it. You cannot ban something and say, oh, well, we ain't got the power or we ain't got the right to ban this, but we can ban this.
Perhaps you're a better lawyer than I, but I will propose that we send this to our city attorney and have him look into it and, uh, and decide whether or not that, that's something we can do within our constitutional powers.
That's fine.
But like I told you this afternoon, uh, with our, if we are unable to outright ban dogs or if the board is simply unwilling to, to, to vote for an ordinance to outright ban these dogs, then we need to look at other alternatives that can achieve your goal. For example, someone might say, I'm tired of my wife cheating on me. I'm going to shoot her and be done with her. If she's six foot underground, she can't cheat on me anymore. There are other alternatives to shooting one's wife. There are other alternatives to simply banning pit bulls. What's the point? I think we should work, we need to consider all things.
If, if it's for some reason, Don, we, we can't go with the outright ban. I think if we adopt or do something similar to the Springfield, I think that's gonna be a deterrent because a lot of the people haven't, won't get them microchipped and a lot of them won't get them set up and be like they're supposed to. So therefore, we have a right to say, okay, then you can't do that. So that might be, uh, an alternative that we could go with.
I understand that.
But we can also get a hold of NML because there's gotta be other places.
I mean, you already have an ordinance on vicious dogs.
Right.
Requirements. So if there've been complaints about it, I'm not sure why we didn't follow through with that. We need to check with Lynn and the police officer involved.
I'll tell you why. Because you can leave a thousand messages down there at that dog town and you'll never get a call back.
I mean, I just, we do have a vicious dog.
Okay, let's, let's see what we can do. Okay?
I just, I'd like to throw something in from the peanut gallery back here. It's really, really hard to generalize on breeds of dogs. Play devil's advocate just a little bit. We personally had a pit bull years ago, one of the best dogs we've ever had. Not all pit bulls are bad. I would hate to see a child or anyone injured by any breed of dog. Uh, I'm, what I'm wondering is, um, why this particular dog, if it's causing that much troubles, it hasn't been taken care of? Like I said, when you, if you...
If we've already got ordinances on the books...
It should, yeah, it should.
That should handle it. Let's handle it that way.
I'm just thinking, at first it's...
We got a dog catcher that should handle it, but like I said, you get nothing but an answering machine when you call down there.
Well, they're, they're busy people too. I, I understand, I understand your concern and I understand about losing your dog. That's, that's a bad thing. But I'm, I'm thinking if you ban one breed, before long you'd be banning another breed and another breed, so...
Most breeds don't kill.
Pardon me?
Pit bulls kill for the fun of it. It's in their nature.
That's a matter, that's just a matter, that, that's, I don't think that's factual, so...
Let, let us work on it and see if we can't come up with something at least by the February meeting. That be okay?
I appreciate it.
Can you start to research this back there?
Your city attorney's sitting right there.
I was in court, just so everyone knows. I just got out of municipal court. That's why I'm late. Sorry. I won.
Travis, I always blame the judge, dude.
You didn't hear me say that.
All right, any other citizen comments? I see none. Minutes and bills?
I didn't see anything, so I'll make a motion that we accept minutes and bills as written.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That motion passes. Department head reports administration.
I missed your report.
Yeah.
And the budget.
I took a week off, sorry.
How dare you?
No, I think I was so busy doing taxes and getting everything ready, but, um, it's busy time of year. So, um, there isn't, I mean, regular work is what I've been doing. The financials are about half done, so I'll just get them out for you for the special meeting.
Okay.
Uh, the bank statement wasn't available. I actually came in to do it on the thirty-first before I left town and it, the internet, the website wasn't working, so I couldn't do it. But I, it's about half done right now on my desk, so... Any questions? We sent out about three new dangerous building letters today. Couple of nuisance letters last week, just based on a few complaints that have been coming in.
Anything else for administration? Animal control. Uh, Lynn is ill, uh, this evening. Does anyone have any input, uh, on animal control or any questions? Building inspection.
I don't have too much to report other than what I have in my report here. I don't have, uh, any of this one because at the end of the year, I put down the tools for the year. So you can get a comparison from two thousand eight to now. How many, how many new permits were we talking about doing this year?
Any questions over our building inspector? All right, our fire department.
Uh, the only thing that I didn't, uh, was last year we ran about seven hundred and thirty-six calls. Nothing to do with that in there. So other than that, nothing, nothing else is on the board.
Any questions for our fire department? Thank you, sir. Our park department?
I got nothing to talk to the board.
Any questions of our parks department? Police department, sir?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we got the computer back up, so was able to get November's figures along with December's. For November, we had earned one hundred and thirty-six calls for service, forty-five citations. We had, uh, eighteen arrests, possession of paraphernalia and control substance, eight existing arrests, two assault, two assaulting law enforcement officer, one driving law intoxicated, one stealing, one burglary, one, and peace disturbance and trespass, one. In December, we had hundred and thirty-seven calls for service, uh, fifty citations, four vehicle accidents. We had twenty-seven arrests, which were fourteen warrants, three possession of control substance, paraphernalia, two assault, one driving law intoxicated, one we vote, one driving, out of his life, and three stealing, one, uh, car sex offender, illegal resident, and, uh, one harassment. And I just want to mention to contact, uh, our area traffic engineer and he's agreed to put some, uh, curb traffic hash signs there on over sixty-five highways that are coming, uh, south from Weeks Music. There's a real bad sharp turn there. It goes on sixty-five. I have requested some hash mark signs up there and he's gonna put those together. So...
In fact, you probably need to even drop the speed limit down way, way down right there.
Yeah, they could have signed to drop it quite a bit on a, on a curve ahead. If they don't...
I know it's there and I still have that sign on my brain.
Have we got that deet it over yet, Sam?
Do.
Have we got that deet it over yet? That's very rude.
I don't...
Is it not?
I don't think so.
No, I've never seen anything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
As long as the state pays for it.
Yeah, yeah. We all had a lot of complaints from the dogs and I should have been, uh, Mary, I still feel I could do help out.
Yeah.
Any questions of our police department?
Okay, and Sam, you got on this information technologies? Just reminding the council, this is that software and, uh, hook-ins to allow them to more computerize their records and to bring in the information that they need when they have a suspect there. I think it's money very well spent if there's any way that we can get that put through.
And Sam, this is what we discussed, is that correct? And, and this is the same system they use at the sheriff's?
Yeah, uh, Bob, last year, whenever I brought this to, to the board, Bob is familiar with this type of thing and knew the salesmen. So that's why Bob asked you.
I went and checked with the sheriff's department and then the prosecuting attorney and then talked with Jeff City. Everybody, out of, out of what everybody's using, this one looks like the one that's more and more going through it.
Okay.
So...
It shall be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions of our police department? All right, uh, tax collection report. Any questions regarding the tax collection report?
Alan, can we keep the twenty-three dollars and twelve cents from two thousand and seven?
Um, forever. Well, this year will be the third year, so surely it'll sell this year because there's special restrictions on the third time you sell the tax listed for sale, so...
Okay.
It's, I, I mean, you're gonna hope you sell it this year, but I don't think you ever do away with real estate taxes.
Right. The same with even two thousand and eight?
Yes. It, we just, I mean, we had one property from two thousand and seven that didn't sell and one property from two thousand and eight that didn't sell.
Correct.
So there's liens on the property and nobody been on them.
It's posted where they're at?
They're tax sale, yeah. They're, I mean, it's just the regular tax sale in August, so...
You may have two properties to achieve.
Well, the problem is there's liens on them and that's where I run into a problem on Marsh Street, so...
Oh, okay.
But I think there's special requirements on the third year of the tax sale and it, you take possession right away and the people that owe the money have the right to reclaim it, but they have to do it right away. Are you very familiar with tax sale? I know we've talked about it a little bit, Travis.
Yeah, I mean, they have a right to redeem period.
Yeah, but they're, but on the third year, the right to redeem period shrinks a lot, so...
Any other questions? All right, wastewater treatment plan.
Okay, first of all, uh, the pamphlet or booklet, whatever you wanna call this in front of you guys, the novel? Novel, I've got there. Uh, that's the information that I had put together, uh, after talking with EPA of what would be the next thing that we need to... Uh, with it, there are, uh, what I, what I have picked out is the area that we need to look at for rehab and the cost that would be involved. There's too much information there to cover tonight, so I'd like to know if you guys would just take it and look at it, see what you think. I've got my phone number in there if you have any questions. And, uh, at the next, uh, special meeting, we can go over it and see what you think.
This, this was a lot of work, guys. Thanks, I appreciate that.
Only other thing I have is we had a chlorine pump go out on the building number four. Uh, I have number four shut off and the tower isolated right now because, uh, we have to chlorinate the tower. And that's, that's it.
Is that very big? I mean, that very much of a deal?
No, I don't think so. Uh, we've never had to do it before, but I think we pulled off pretty easy.
Have you got the cement ready for the, uh, well, well heldness?
No, I haven't. I've been working on this stuff here, getting it ready.
The box will ruin and they're hot.
Okay.
What about the, uh, smoke testing and everything? What did we ever do about that? This smoke testing, forget it or what?
No, uh...
Is it here?
No. Uh, the smoke testing, we've already, we've got all the information together. Debbie's putting together a letter to send out to, to your people.
And I can clarify that. We're, we're right now with the smoke testing and, and the analysis of data. We're trying to determine, uh, where our major problem areas are because there is money left in that bond to, to cure those. And we're trying to get the more, most bang for our buck when we do invest that money.
In the past, it's never, all they do is smoke testing and that's it. Never cracked it or nothing.
And, and I do wanna commend Gus and Debbie for being on top of that. Gus has spent a lot of time here at city hall going through pictures and figuring out what's, what, what, when and where and why and, and that.
The deal is EPA knows that we did a smoke test.
That's what you did the last time. Did the test and nothing was ever done about it.
But EPA didn't know about that, they do now. So this is, we don't have a choice. We've got to do something, so, you know.
And rest assured, there'll be follow-up and it'll be...
Yeah.
Any other questions for our wastewater treatment plan? All right. Water adjustments?
Make a motion we accept the adjustments as written.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes. Old business. Appears we have no old business. New business. We have our trash bids.
Call trash.
You guys want some explanation or...
Yeah, focus group.
Um, well, we took bids on trash, uh, put it in the paper. Carla and John Lambie, as those are Mount San patients, have a five-year extension that can be granted to them, um, that will just renew the existing contract. And then affordable environmental waste did submit a bid. The first page is just my calculations, um, and that's why I highlighted the box down below because you can skip the top part. It's quite a bit cheaper contract, um, and that's what that shows down below. The average residential customer would save eighty-one cents a year. And over the term of a five-year contract would save forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. And then they're both here, if you wanna talk to them. And then I figured we'd put it on the agenda for the study session and that in-depth discussion.
I don't think the service we got would be deep.
For the sake of the public, could you explain what the services are? I know at one point in time, things used to be picked up, smaller things that weren't in the containers. And it seems now that if it's, am I right? If it's not in the container, it doesn't get picked up? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. I mean, if it's like extra trash, like holidays or birthday parties, things like that, we pick it all up. And what we tried to do, there were problems with the citywide cleanups in the past before we took over where we had a lot of rural customers bringing trash into the city residential houses. And so to try to alleviate some of that and to help people not have to wait till the city cleanup, we implemented the voucher system where they could put this stuff out year round. They didn't have to hold on to a mattress for six months. They could go ahead and just go buy that voucher and then, and all...
Would you explain that voucher system?
The voucher is just, we have to pay weight at the landfill per pound and the voucher just helps us offset the cost of the weight of the items.
The cost of the voucher?
And it depends on what the item is. They range anywhere from a dollar fifty to, to the two fifty to the heaviest being...
Two fifty to eight, I think, or eight fifty?
That'd be for like a height of bed, couch, something that's pretty darn heavy.
Reasonable.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
What do you do, how do you get a voucher?
Um, they come up to city hall and can get them.
So it's easy?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they just, and a lot of people will call up here. They'll call me and I'll call up the tally and tell her so-and-so at this address wants this voucher. Just have it ready for them when they get there.
They will pick up stuff too, if you ask them. A lot of times, they've been real good about that too. Your husband has been.
And, you know, I know when you guys had WCA, there were problems with the services and stuff. Things weren't getting done on a timely matter. Routes weren't getting completed every day. And, you know, we've always made the point that we have been here. The only time we asked off was when my brother was dying of cancer for his funeral. I asked if we could have that one day to go to Iowa for his funeral. It was the only time in four and a half years. And we did the service the next day, but, you know, it was the only time we asked off. And I thought it was kind of a circumstance that... And I had, I had already, you know, we were, we knew when he was approximately gonna go and so I had it already cleared with mayor Hardisty at that time, ahead of time. And even through the tornadoes, we were here every day. We even ran that Tuesday route twice because that tornado hit that Tuesday.
Right.
And, or Monday night, Monday night.
There was a night?
Yeah. And so...
Well, no, it was during the day. It was during the day.
It was on Monday though, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so we ran that Tuesday route on Tuesday and Wednesday because so many people were just, just up in arms.
I can't see much more to change in myself. I have to sort of go out myself. Whatever that guy wants, I'll do.
Try to understand.
Well, and we've tried to work with the city really hard with your cardboard, your truck is having problems. You know, we're not, we're not making any money on the cardboard. You know, that's kind of obvious. And we just try to get, in fact, we even pushed other towns that we have to recycle, and we put that cardboard in with the Buffalo route just to try to get more revenue in for that recycling center so it doesn't have to close up, because it's a nice thing to have in town. Maybe one of the cardboard prices is on the line.
I think it's on the last sheet.
Who's representing affordable environmental?
Nick Carmen.
Yes, sir.
Your idea on the voucher system, did you come up with, you're giving those twelve vouchers to the customers?
Correct. We come up also where the customer can put out one bulk item each week. That way, when time for the city cleanup comes, they won't have just as much as they will, uh, during that one week, you know, that one Saturday of the year cleaning up. What size are your trash cans? Uh, they're ninety-five gallons. We also got sixty-eight gallons for the handicap or the elderly people that can't, willing the big dumpster out there. So we're willing to also give those at the same price. And we'll also give the door service, if there's someone who can't get their trash out, it's handicap. Our drivers will go up there and get the trash also. Little by, little bit by myself, uh, got military background, seven years. After that, I've done construction for seven years. And while I'm doing construction, I started a trash company called Carmen Rescue Service. We started out of a pickup truck, uh, for two years, and then after two years, we grew, grew steadily in Springfield, Republican, Willard. Ended up after twelve years, we serviced over ten thousand accounts, uh, within those three communities, fourteen trucks, seventeen employees. We followed all the DOT regulations from, uh, drivers getting their DOT physicals, job screening. We had, we never had a city contract. Uh, we bid it on NIXA, uh, we came in second next to Allied Waste. But we had about at least a dozen homeowner associations. We've also, for commercial-wise dumpsters, we also done, uh, had OTC for three multiple years. Green County Purchasing was another large account for Springfield. Uh, we had that for two years. Actually, with OTC, I'm sorry, for six years, we had it for two consecutive, uh, three-year contracts. So we're, we're very experienced in the business. My employees take pride in what they do, uh, just like Ozark, Mount Sanation, they're a family-owned business, so am I. Except I've got friends that, that followed me into the business and still want to work next to me.
Are we supposed to decide and I should come to keep, Andy, is that the deal?
We don't have to, no, that's what I'm saying.
No, no, we're more for discussion.
Discussion and consideration.
May I also ask, say, um, you guys, we also, um, supply you with commercial dump, uh, roll-off dumpsters as in from anywhere from the hook trucks where we got small ten yards. They're very convenient for the customer and economical where it's sitting in their driveway. We stuck some of these boxes in some of the, uh, garages that people ask us to in the nice neighborhoods. They don't want them sitting out. Uh, so we have anywhere from a ten yard all the way up to a forty-yard dumpster also.
I would like to ask one thing, when we started the contract and the tornado came through, and at the time, it was the attorney's interpretation, Lisa Henderson was the city attorney at that time. She interpreted that our contract was an exclusive contract. And when the tornado came through, Mr. Carmen did bring in roll-off boxes when it was asked to remove them, and he said he was brought in by FEMA. And I believe Debbie had checked on that. She said there was nobody notified from FEMA to give him permission to bring the boxes in, and when he was asked to remove them, he didn't.
And I guess the question would be, who, who, who contracted with him to bring those in?
No one, he did himself.
I bet different, I can pull up my records and find out who the actual FEMA representative was and contacted us. We done, uh, at least three different tornadoes for my clever buildings. And then when the tornado came through here, uh, I contacted FEMA, uh, management and asked them if we can haul boxes up there. Uh, they said yes, and Ozark Mount Sanation contacted us, so we had to get our boxes out. I believe the city contacted us also, and I gave, I gave them a name and number. I didn't give Ozark, uh, Mount Sanation that name and number, but I gave it to the city representative at that time. And, uh, I told them that, you know, FEMA had, um, I guess some bigger power because we was there to help the community and get it cleaned up as quick as possible.
If, if, if there's an exclusive contract between your company and the city, that means the city can't.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and but like I said, we checked with Lisa Henderson at the time to make sure, and she.
I, I understand, but, but if someone else contracted with him to put a dumpster, say, in my driveway, privately.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we also contacted FEMA to, to verify what he was telling us, and they knew nothing about it. Said no FEMA money was going into the town's economy. It was too soon.
Well, may, maybe Mr. Carmen was, was kind-hearted and called that all away for free, but I would, I would doubt that the city paid him any money. And if the city paid him any money, that's where your drive would be as far as that exclusivity would be concerned.
Well, and it was just that he was asked to remove them, I didn't.
Hey, guys, you want a motion or you want to read it over, look at it at the next meeting?
Say we'll just let it settle and I'll.
Yeah, it's not like you read all of it completely. We, we don't need a motion to postpone doing.
This item may be tabled.
All right, I apologize, are there any further questions? And I thank the, the both of you for, for having tonight.
Thank you for having me here.
All right, our next item on our agenda is ordinances. We have no new ordinances. Is there anything else that we need to talk about, discuss, do, decide?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
There's such a thing. All those in favor?